To order through the regular planning commission meeting for Marsh.
Kowalski.
Here.
Over.
Russell.
Marsh.
Here.
Phillips.
Here.
Healy. Roberts.
Here.
Cardy. Hill. Burgley.
Here.
Malad.
Here.
Second here.
Here.
Oh, sorry, you're right.
I'm here.
Sorry, I skipped. Okay, so next up, action on the minutes from the February meeting. Can someone move the minutes?
Someone.
All right, any changes, additions, corrections?
They're good minutes.
Seeing none, all favor of the minutes as posted, say aye. Post. Okay, minutes are approved, moving right along. We have someone move the agenda, please. Someone. For, for Roberts, any changes, additions, corrections of the agenda?
One yesterday under proposed business. It's April 3rd, which your next meeting that's March 6th.
We want to redo March again. All right, so April 3rd. Okay, so it's just a little script. Don't need to motion that. Okay, all favor of the agenda is posted, say aye.
As amended.
Sorry. As amended, aye.
Aye.
Post. All right, the agenda isn't public here, so we have none scheduled for tonight. Moving on, pre-rates, some suspicion, we have none of that either. Reports of officers, chairman report, I don't have a report tonight. Planning commissioners, anybody want to share anything? You did have something shared with Kyle, I don't know how, it was within the packet, something just kind of an FYI. Pretty interesting if you guys have a chance to look at it, watch it.
Yeah.
Thanks Kyle. That's official, anything, well, I mean, I know council has a meeting.
Yeah, I'm sure you all do.
Yeah.
We had a meeting and we finally go in, made a decision on a path forward for fire station, so we're gonna keep moving ahead and it's gonna be a good team effort regardless of the fact that it was a close vote. As y'all know, it wasn't an easy vote one way or the other, so here we are, I'm happy we moved forward. We are, we voted to leave it downtown, whether that be leveling whole building and starting over or renovating or some creative combination in between.
So that's about as done as, can be as far as locational downtown or not.
But it does allow us the, it finally, it finally gives us the passion forward to instead of having all these discussions, to have discussions with a decision behind.
Yeah, if it's one more step, it's not an easy choice obviously, but it's, it's very complicated, so at least there's one step in the right direction. Thank you, wow. Committee reports, if you have anything from our committee zoning, you know.
There was no CBA moves.
Okay, all right. Community development report.
Okay, thank you all for being patient with the packet. With us being closed, there was lots of moving, lots of unpacking, and we're still unpacking, organizing, so anybody that wants to stick around after the meeting, I can give you a little quick tour. Otherwise, we can do it at another time. The only update I have for you, you may recall that since, just before the end of the year last year, we were talking with Corbin Farms, they indicated that they wanted to investigate the Andersons' city after looking at what things are gonna cost them, they decided to put that on back burner, so it could come back, but right now, it's, it's not going forward.
Now, is that just their decisions or was there any?
That was their decision.
Because I thought, wouldn't we be able to annex it because it's like an island, I mean, I thought that we couldn't.
Nope, it wouldn't have been an island. Because of.
Oh, what's connected across?
And the two pieces in Webster, which make it directly across from the Cedars.
Okay. Okay, interesting.
Hi, Mr. and Mrs. Clark, I'm over here.
Okay. Sorry, I interrupted, was there anything else from your report?
No. Need to make sure we log in. Okay, so you may have heard, you know that the city's one of the developers called Tom and Sam. Excuse me, the redevelopment of the 35 Broad Street. We, we learned last month that the, the geotechnical consultant that they had hired penetrated the heartbeat of the of the Broad Street property. And didn't know that it was a contaminated site. So we have been working very diligently to get everybody to move forward as quickly as possible to get the, the certain borings re-drilled, grounded, and sealed. And as you can imagine, there have been a lot of conversations.
Sure, conversations.
Yes, yes, so the original geotechnical person, Tom and Sam could not come to terms with them on a revised scope of work and general terms and conditions for them doing drilling. And so now they have selected a new geotechnical consultant to do that. And we actually have a meeting tomorrow morning via Zoom to talk about the scope of work and some of the deficiencies or concerns over that, regarding, so we're working with the STI, Scott Manziel, helping the city.
I'm on this committee and I should know this, but I don't. Who owns that, does the city own it or does the?
The DDA.
DDA, so one of this stuff about putting it to the voters, apply.
We already did that.
I'm putting it to the voters.
Oh, so 3045 Broad Street was already owned by the DDA before the vote on the charter happened.
Okay.
And because it's a DDA property, it's, DDA is part of the city, but it's not city-owned property, and therefore it doesn't have to go to a vote of the people.
But it was a small piece of it that did, right?
The 80, 90 Grand Street proportion that undeveloped, basically parking area by Red Gales, or that's the part that's still in that city.
So I, I, all the folks involved in this, so this is the example why it's viable to have a Phase 1 and Phase 2 environmental on, on property. And I don't know, you know, who's involved or.
We have all the environmental, we provided all the environmental documentation, all the parcels to the developer, the developer neglected it, other geotechnical consultant.
Are you?
Oh, yeah.
Maybe this isn't the right understanding, so maybe you can help me correct it. I thought if any wells were advanced in the county, you needed a county well permit.
So there were no wells done, and we didn't.
Or boring.
Soil borings as part of geotechnical don't have to go to the county.
So it's just a well?
No, it's a, it's a soil boring for geotechnical.
But they didn't put a monetary well in there?
No, the, there is a restrictive covenant on that property through formerly MDQ, now EBIT for three existing wells. If those get relocated or if the city were to put another one, we have to go to DQ.
So there would be no need to get a permit for a well because they weren't installing monitoring wells.
Correct.
In my role, I'm also a member of the Board of Cal and the head of the Fire and Health Appeals Committee. I can confirm, it's only for a well for borers here.
Thank you.
Dumb knowledge, one picks up over the ears.
So that's, that's my report.
Wow, okay, just to keep you on your toes. Okay, any other questions from Michelle? No, good. All right, citizens wishing to address the commission?
Please, Chad.
Yeah.
Chad is participating as a citizen.
Nobody raising their hand either. I guess we can move right along to whole business, the CIP for fiscal year 23 to play.
So in your packet, there is the updated CIP sheets. They look a little bit different this year because we are working through, we implemented the new cleared up software, which is supposed to help with budgeting and transparency. So we're using that for the CIP as well, so the payment looks a little bit different coming from there. There's also a summary included in there. We have eight projects from last year that were removed, mostly because they were completed. I think there was one that was deemed no longer needed. And then we also have five new projects. We are going to be adding one more for a generator for the water tower. And then there's also going to be an adjustment to the project cost for, it's project 8.02, which is the Grand Street sanitary main. Based on feedback from the wastewater department, it's gonna be a cost increase to that, but I didn't get that in time to include that in the packet, so that will be there. So I guess if anyone has any comments on that or any direction you'd like me to do with it, I guess the goal is to set the public hearing for April and the general consensus is we're going in the right direction, so.
Yeah, so questions, comments, if not, then yes.
With some of these streets projects, would it be possible to have like, is there, is there?
Would this be an opportune time for me to make comments on the, or, or at the end?
Definitely not, is it?
Because you have the ability to open it up after your conversation here, so if you can hold on just a second, Chad.
Okay, and then open up the public comment?
Yeah.
Okay, to be official, Chad. Okay, so, yes, Kyle?
I'm just about to, you know, on these one sheets and stuff, like if there's a supporting drawings or documentation or anything that, you know, it might be a good spot to include in this additional information, like a link to some PDF that's got drawings or you see.
So you mean?
And maybe I have.
Yeah, we've got some of those, yeah, those.
Okay.
Yeah, we won't have a meeting then.
Okay.
Okay, oh yeah, so for more information, this is not developed, that's a good question, but yes.
I know this is FFP, but I'd like to speak up in opposition to allowing Chad to speak because I don't do that for other members of the public.
That's true.
We're setting a precedent, this is not how we should do it, we've never done it this way before. We shouldn't do things for board members when they're on Zoom, but we don't do things. Okay, that's, that's, that's what we have in public comment.
I think I agree with that, so I think, but if we, so yeah.
There is also the citizens wishing to address at the end.
Yes, exactly, so I, I, I think I would agree with that.
It's not about Chad in any way.
No, no, I think Chad, I think Chad understands that as well, so.
So I should speak for Chad.
Okay, so yes, Chad, we will, if you could say your comment to the, when, when we're gonna get to the end of the, actually, it's not gonna be that long probably. Citizens wishing to address the commission, I am all over. Okay, so yes, Karen?
Well, we, when we were discussing the second street, whether to do something with it now or wait till the next cycle. The next cycle, are we redoing the master plan?
And it's 2024, it comes up for the five year review. And at that time is when we'll look at what needs to be updated. And it may not be that we do the complete overhaul like we did this last time, but the only thing that gets done is the sub area plan for second street. So it becomes a minor amendment, so to speak, to.
So it doesn't need to be in, I'm sorry, it doesn't need to be in here, the zoning ordinance update is in, what I think it'd be done, so I'm not sure.
Well, it was in, I think we would be part of that overall update.
When did the master plan update was in there?
So if you look, what you see is for the zoning ordinance, it's got a $25,000 total. It's already done because we finished it with council approving it after February 13th meeting. As far as the master plan update, we could put in for 2024.
This says 2024.
I thought that was in there for.
It, well, the zoning ordinance, oh, you're right, it's master plan update.
There's a, yeah.
Right, there's one for master plan, we'll just have to add that for 2024.
Okay.
Wait, and, and what exactly?
You, we'll just identify an amount.
Okay.
And.
As a placeholder for that, just that, okay.
Right.
Okay. Good. Other questions? We will get, so obviously this is just setting the public hearing, so we all have a chance to review and comment at the next meeting as well, but if there's anything significant, we'll point out in the ass. All right, well, we don't have a lot of other discussions. We can set the public hearing, if somebody wants to set a motion of set public hearing, it could be April meeting, we'll have the date offhand.
So I don't know for sure, but I think this is the first year that the track intervention in community park that I proposed for years has not been applied, so somebody finally heard me.
No, we gotta, we'll get that readied.
Which, which one are you talking about?
In the community park, the extra like loop.
Oh, yeah, that's because the, it didn't come in from Park and Rec issue. That's the only reason.
Tom and Jim, that was your favorite project.
No, Tom's favorite project is Stone here.
Oh, okay. It's the, it's the tractor crosser, okay.
Oh, that's true.
Jim and I were working on cutting the paving budget for parks, maybe.
I think you can put that, there's a line on it, sorry, sorry.
So is this Mill Creek playground happening?
It's supposed to.
I think the parks commission is waiting to hear back about a grant that they applied for.
Oh, yeah, it'd be interesting to see that, because we had, they asked us for that feedback on that, the plan, so it's, kind of see where it fell, I should go.
Yeah, I know they have funding allocated for that, but they're waiting to see what they get back from the grant to decide final plans of what they can.
Would that grant include that 200 or is that?
No, that's what I think is, that's what's allocated from their budget. And then they're working, they applied for the grant and they're waiting to see.
So I assume the grant would take away from that 200, not in addition to it?
It would be in addition to it.
Oh.
That's on that.
Oh, that's just on that.
Yeah, that's our, that's our.
Do they have a design yet?
I think they reviewed some designs, but they haven't decided anything, they're waiting to see if they, if they were awarded the grant for the full scope and what they're gonna put in.
Okay, we had, Cardy moved, I don't think I heard a support. Does that public hearing?
For.
For Roberts. Okay, all favor of setting the public hearing through the April, what's the date?
Third.
April 3rd meeting, so I think we'll need a roll call, please.
Marsh?
No.
You're not setting public hearing?
Well, I'm not gonna be here, so.
It's okay, we'll still, we'll say yes.
So yeah.
Stop intimidating the board.
Healy?
That's okay.
Yes, Roberts?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Cardy?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Kowar?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes. Okay, set, I won't be here, sorry. All right, moving right along, what'll be business for tonight, proposed business for Monday, April 3rd. Well, you know, we have the CIP, you haven't seen it, public hearing, and anything else that you know of, any projecrants knocking on the door?
I thought we might have a segment for Mike Penn's attainable housing.
Okay.
Down Broad Street. But they've gotten their preliminary numbers for construction.
Oh, yes, too.
It's just discarded, so we're looking at what are the tools in the toolbox that might be able to, he might be able to use. And it, it, it could be anything from that new residential facilities, no, I'm sorry, Residential Housing Facilities Act, which is that targeted tax evasion. It could be he works for the lending bank. But again, that would be through LAGIT 2. But that's a, that has a 515 requirement, so the first five years, 50% of the capture goes to the state lending. And then 50% we go back to the developer. It's not great for the developer and the city's not real fond of that. Everybody understands that, but it's like, it's just a really uncomfortable requirement. So we're, we're just looking to see what tools could be out there.
You know, you mentioned it, Miss Anderson's project as well, Kelly Anderson's.
Well, Kelly Anderson's project isn't, isn't a table housing. That's in the market, right?
True.
And so there's some less to see there, if you will. There isn't actually flexibility with the network. There isn't that same flexibility if you're trying to keep.
Keep the rents down.
Yeah, so.
Wow.
So we'll see, he hasn't given up the shit, but he has sat there about that.
Okay, I appreciate you working with them, you know, lucky we, they, we have you to work with, that one of the people. I think it's a very challenging time, I know, so, so especially for a project like that. Okay, thank you, so I guess possible sci-fi, maybe not, but we shall see. Okay, so with that, citizens wishing to address the commission? We have a citizen, would you like to raise your hand, say your name and address?
That would be me, right?
Hey.
Unless there's somebody else.
Not just you.
All right, I've got a number of comments and questions relative to the different projects that were listed, and let me just go through those quickly. The item 2.07, which is the Mill Creek Park restrooms. My own opinion is that ought to be a part of the fire station remodel if and when that gets done rather than a separate building. And I'm not sure that that's mentioned in there. Number, item 208 is the Huron River kayak launch, which I strongly support because how many times have you seen people walking across the bridge with their inflatables to get into the Huron River? One of the things that is not, I've never heard mentioned, but it's worth mentioning is that that's a four lane bridge and it's only used, only two lanes are ever used. So what is the possibility of using, of creating two parking lanes on either side? Or some means of allowing people to traverse that bridge more safely than what they're doing? It could be done very easily, as I say, it's a four lane bridge, but it'll never be used for four lanes of traffic. So it's something to think about. Item 210, Dexter Chelsea Road Trail Connector. As you all know, right, I think you know, I'm strongly opposed to reusing the Bell Road Bridge as a connector across Mill Creek, I think it's, it's gonna be too large, it's gonna be too visible, it's gonna be a maintenance problem over time as opposed to something, something more appropriate and less expensive at that location. Karen talked a bit about the second street corridor, that was item 5.08. I think that ought to be two items in some fashion, in other words, it says corridor and streetscape plan. And I think at our, the last meeting I was at, that was part of the discussion, that the streetscape shouldn't be part of the planning, that's a whole different effort. So maybe it makes more sense to have two different items there. Plus that it was deferred, as was mentioned, the whole planning for that had been deferred until the master plan update 2024. And the last thing I had here was item 10.01, Huron Farms Connector. My comment on that is, whoa. Where did that come from, I didn't, I'm sure it's been out there, but I've never seen it, that is a bridge over the railroad at that location. That, maybe it's needed, I don't know, if there's that much traffic that wants to connect across the railroad at, at the Huron Farms, but I'm, I'm just curious as all, in that particular regard, if that's really something that's being considered strongly. So that's what I have. Thank you for letting me comment, and hopefully that's a little bit, that's helpful.
Thank you, sir. Yes, if you'd like to answer.
Yeah, I'll, I'll respond with last item. The, the connector to Huron Farm, the border border trail goes right behind Huron Farms. It's separate and there's actually some open space lots that would, that would allow a connection between the two of them. But there's this ludicrous requirement that the, the rail authority is not allowing a common trail crossing in a railroad track, like on every park everywhere in Michigan has, you know, it, it often their necks are parallel with roads that also cross the track. Well, somebody decided that all of a sudden it's a, it's a, without any evidence, that it's terribly dangerous to cross for bike paths across a railroad track. So the solution was to build a million dollar bridge over the railroad track instead of having a grade level crossing over. So it's a completely ridiculous requirement by some bureaucrat with, I, I think it's the county, whoever owns the railroad at this point or governs the railroad. And I think likely we're just waiting out their employment there. Nobody has really gone back and tried to push this through or go to a higher authority and try to bring some common sense to the discussion, but to your point, people go, kids go on, connect to that trail all the time.
Cross tracks.
Cross the tracks and they risk applying if there happens to be somebody there that wants to give them a ticket because they're trespassing across a railroad right of way. And in some, you know, miniscule sense, that there's probably more danger of just kids crossing tracks than if there was a crossing there. So that's, that's good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, yes.
I'm just gonna respond with Tom. I've been dealing with the railroad for about eight months to try to get an easement to cross their right of way where there's no tracks.
Yeah.
So yes, it's very difficult.
There's no track.
It's to me, it seems to be a personality issue, not, there's no like data or engineering, there's no like record of people being killed at where normal bike railroad crossings. This is somebody's harebrained idea that's really causing other problems.
Yeah.
It's through the city of Dexter, the railroad lines, it's in that jurisdiction, correct?
Yes.
I've dealt with it further to the east where crossings have been needed and easements have been made. And what I've heard is it's because they want to designate this a higher speed route, is my understanding? But they're trying to eliminate all the crossings and so on, so I can imagine it's an uphill battle.
But we have crossings. Yeah, we have Broad Street and Central Street both have crossings.
I think what I was trying to make is that they're not existing ones are there, they're trying to eliminate those that they don't absolutely need and not. They're trying to eliminate those that they don't absolutely need and not allowing any new ones to be established.
Jim?
Little Lakeland State Trail by, uh, Zuki Lake Tavern has a bike crossing and doesn't even have bars that go there. And every time I ride in, I think of Tom.
Yeah.
I know, it's, it's, it's not easy. If I win Powerball, I'm gonna tell the bike.
These road in, in Gal Park also.
With the railroad was that, um, in working at an R, they quit, wanted to put this out there. They put it up in, in, right on the rail by Vandermere Park. We tried to fight them, they literally went out the Railroad Act of 1885. Put it on the table that said it's essential communications, there's nothing you can do about it, thank you, have a nice day. This was before MNA audit, this was 10 years ago, but literally, it was from the 1800s and it was like for telegraphs and it was meant for tele, telegraphs, but it was communications, national day, so.
Lawyers who have, lawyers who have a hammer that you can outhammer.
Yeah.
wield that hammer.
So, yeah, Tom, good luck. But I agree, it's, it's needed. Okay, so there's our side track, hoping the railroad was listening, cause you, if you feel any better about the decision. So, um, with that, we have a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. I heard Karen first, don't support, alright, good. Alright, move on, let's support Cardy. On paper, adjourned, say aye. Aye. Both, I'm, okay, we need to adjourn. Alright, thank you, man, my last two minutes, you guys the last one. That was fun.